Okay, we are streaming and recording. Anytime.
Good evening and welcome back again. I'm Tom Zupfer, Managing Editor of the Sun's Third Panel for City Council this evening. Format again is each candidate has one minute to respond to a question, a little bit of back and forth that's allowed. Leach and we'll out a one-minute closing statement. Also, Dave McArdle, Attorney Page Editor of the Sun's here, who's our timekeeper at the Bell this evening. Tune in recently, the date will be up in its entirety at littlesun.com later this evening so you can catch up. Also be with our story tomorrow that Grant Walker is writing. So, again, let's bring you back, let me introduce the panel. The City Councilor Jim Malinazzo, Al Rattayam, Martin Hogan, Counselor William Samaras, and Counselor John Leahy. John, good evening and welcome. We're going to dive right in. Mr. Malinazzo, Superintendent Taylor proposed a new policy on licensing handguns. What do you think of this plan? Is it right on? Should be more restrictive or less restrictive?
I think it's a work in progress. Do you have any... I think at this point it's a work in progress, and he's been doing a good job, in my opinion, looking at a 30-year policy that needs to really be visited or revisited. We've had a number of meetings at the City Council. We've listened to gun advocates weigh in on the policy. As has been stated earlier, the policy does rest with Superintendent Taylor, but it is a 30-year-old policy. And I think that we really need to make sure that, at the end of the day, that the people that are looking to have a license to carry, it's not as restrictive as it has been for the last 30 years. It's been stated that the criminals aren't going through this process, it's the people that really want to exercise their Second Amendment rights. So, at the end of the day, it's the chief's decision. I think that he is now communicating more openly with the people who are interested in this issue. I know that he has scheduled meetings with people that have been before the City Council to talk about this issue. But I think it's something that, at the end of the day, I think we'll have a better policy.
Mr. Yem.
I applaud the effort of the Chief Taylor, what he has done. And I think the responsibility will rest upon Chief Taylor in implementing this, the new policy for gun owners, for people who want to apply for a gun permit. During my campaign, I met some homeowners who concerned that he has applied for gun permits but has not been approved, and never gave a reason why he's not been approved. And I promised him that I looked into, and recently when we had discussion at the City Hall, I thought that the city do the right thing by providing a review of the gun permit and then giving to Chief Taylor to do. But while the discussion at the City Hall raised some issue, because there was a massacre in the West at the time, a few days before, and then the gun discussion at the City Hall, is this national who trying to push the gun permit in the area? So, that's just my questions.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, I believe that Superintendent's doing the right thing. Anything, any law, rule that is 30 years old, society changes. And I think that we need to look at how much society's changed, as well as how much environment has changed. And I think that the best thing to do is to start looking at the other areas in which the gun violence is happening from, instead of looking at it from the gun permit. As stated before, people who are looking to receive a gun permit usually aren't the people trying to victimize somebody. They're the ones that are trying to protect themselves and their families. And I believe that it is your right to apply for, and the chief's right to update and uphold any of the rules that there are for receiving a handgun permit. So, I agree with them.
Counselor Samaras.
Thank you. In regard to gun permits or those type of issues, they elicit a lot of emotion from a lot of people all over the country. And what Chief Taylor is doing, and Chief Taylor, I did make a statement on the floor of the council, that we look to him to protect us as citizens, to make sure that we're safe as a community. And I think when he looked at the law, he looked at how restrictive it was, but he also realized that there are Second Amendment rights. And what he did was he put in a program for a little more training. And that training went beyond the idea of this is how a gun works, but he wants people to actually handle guns to ensure that they're safe with that. So, I applaud him for that. I mean, it's, when you come into issues like the Second Amendment rights, the former history teacher, someone that appreciates that, I mean, I value our rights and our amendment rights, and we have to make sure we take care of those things. At the same time, we have to make sure our citizens is safe. So, I applaud him for what he's doing, he's thinking it out, and he's making it work.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I think the chief's doing the right thing. First of all, he's looking at the law, he's looking at these ordinance, you know, the issue came up, it's being addressed. I don't think that what he's asking is too much. He wants people to be safe, it's his responsibility to make sure that the citizens are safe. So, as Counselor Samaras said, there's a lot of emotion at the council meeting. But, you know, I think that, at the end of the day, we're going to come up with a good ordinance. People that have experience through military or whatever, that's going to count towards training. It's not outrageous to ask people who have these training courses, especially the live fire. And, you know, people were talking about the cost, but if you go to buy or purchase a gun today, you know, you're going to spend over $500 anyway. So, they were talking about the cost being over $500 for all the training, you're going to spend that on whatever piece you buy. So, I support him, I'm glad everybody brought this up, and at the end of the day, we're going to have an ordinance we all like.
Hey, thank you. Next question, start with you, Mr. Yem. Should police officers carry tasers and wear body cams?
I'm very supportive of tasers. I think this story about a gentleman downtown was praised by the National Police instead of, you know, instead of being, it is not cooperating to the police officers. I'm, for one, believe in body cam to protect our police officers, and some people talked about, you know, civil liberties, but also the camera is, you're able to turn on and off. When you enter a home, it can be turned off. Also, the suspect, when knowing that the police wearing the camera, I believe also deterred that person from, you know, be out of control or do damage to the, or hurt the police officer, as it just happened yesterday, that three police officers was hurt because this gentleman, you know, take down the police officer.
Hogan.
I would say yes on both. I believe that the tasers are a good alternative to a lethal weapon being used in all cases. As far as the body cams go, as you well know, police cruisers have always been, or have been for a long time, not always, because at one time they were horse and buggy, but they have been outfitted with cameras. And that's for the safety of the police officer and for anybody whom they are approaching. I think that when we're dealing with a video camera, as was said, we can shut it off, but we have to come up with some kind of rules as far as where it shuts off. When they enter a house, do you have to shut it off? Do you have to announce that you have it on as soon as you get to the house and have to shut it off? Or can you ask for permission to use it inside? Things of that sort. But I think it would help to advance what we do for the police and to use for training reasons.
Counselor Samaras.
Thank you. I do believe that we have to give our policemen every tool that we can to allow them to do their job, to protect us, but also to protect themselves. And I believe tasers are one of those instruments that will work well for them. As was stated before, we had to have a National Park person put somebody down where lethal process might have been used otherwise. Regarding the cameras, I'm not sure at this particular point. Chief Taylor has stated that he's going to try a pilot program with the use of the cameras. I think that will give the City Council the information that it needs. I think, on one hand, I believe it is a device that will help policemen do their job, but also protect them in case of any type of legal litigation against them. But in other cases, you know, is it really the type of equipment that's necessary? There is a cost to it, but costs aren't the issue. Is it the right thing for policemen to have? And I believe Chief Taylor's pilot project will tell that. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I think the tasers, right now, would be a good idea. And for that, anything that we can do without using lethal, you know, anything that lethal force would be better. The cameras are not sold on yet. Speaking to a lot of officers that I know, they're not quite sure. I know there's different makes and models and sizes, and so that all has to be looked at. But these men and women, if you look at them now, you know, all the equipment they have, that, you know, I don't know how they can move and do their job in the first place, you know, both the breasts, the cuffs, the guns, the batons, every, I mean, it's getting ridiculous. So, we want to make sure that they can do their job properly and safely. That would be my first priority.
Counselor Muller.
Thank you. I do believe that we should outfit our offices with tasers. We had a public safety subcommittee meeting not too long ago, and I believe the office was either from Waltham or Woburn that actually came and talked to us about the proper training for tasers. So, I think that is something that we should really delve into, and I think it will save lives, meaning that they won't have to use force if they can use the tasers and have them in their cruisers. The issue of the body camera, I'm interested to see what Chief Taylor comes back with in the way of a pilot program. I do think there are civil liberties issues, I think there are cost issues associated with it. I'd like to hear what the Patrolman Association has to say about having body cameras. We got in a big discussion, we were putting GPS units in cruisers. So, I think that the body camera will probably have the same type of discussion. I do think, though, at the end of the day, it's all about public safety, protecting our police officers, our men and women in uniform, and at the same time, as we all know, we have iPhones, and people come on scenes, and they have their cameras and they're recording. Again, it's something that I'm waiting to hear what Chief Taylor will bring back to the council.
Thank you. Next question goes to you first, Mr. Hogan. What's more important, new high school or new public safety complex?
To me, the important factors are, obviously, in the city are education and, say, public safety. I think what we need to do is, we need to definitely invest in the schools. And I'm not sure if building a new school, moving the school, whatever the case is, is the right move. However, I do feel that we need to invest in the schools. The second thing, which would be definitely right up the alley, too, would be to update our public safety stations and anything else that we can for public safety. Because I think if you don't educate and you don't have the right people on the street, and, you know, you're going to have a city that is going to fall back into chaos. So, I think those two things are very important, and I would work very hard to make sure both are done.
Counselor Samaras.
Thank you. I think you might know where I come from. Life is full of choices, and these are two very good choices and very important to a community. And when you talk about a new high school, you're talking about our future, you're talking about the future of the city. And, you know, we're in this high school, it's a very clean building, it's well-maintained, but so, the science labs do not work, it does not work properly. The infrastructure, when you're talking about the technology, it's become quite outdated. And if we're going to go into the 21st century, if this is going to be a school department that will keep up with the growth of the university and Middlesex Community College, I think building this new high school in this downtown, making it technologically sufficient to meet the needs of today's students, I think will do many things. It will basically help the economy, but also what it's going to do, it's going to have our students so interested and so, they're going to see the opportunity. You show opportunity, you have success, and that's what we will do.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Right now, the high school is a priority for two reasons. We're getting the, once we get the okay, we get the financing for it, you know, we're not paying 100% for this. So, we're going to get the reimbursement from the state, and that's a big part of it. And as Counselor Samaras was mentioning, you know, we have to tie the high school in with the Middlesex College and the university. But, you know, we can't forget our police station, our fire stations, that's all in the capital budget, in the capital plan. You know, we have to reach out, we have to come up with new ways to replace that police station. It is in need of replacement. But right now, the opportunity is for the high school, so let's deal with that and continue with our police and fire.
Counselor Malinazzo.
I agree with Counselor Leahy. The opportunity is now with the Lowell High School. We're in the midst of doing a feasibility study, and we're also working with the MSBA to get hopefully, you know, 80% reimbursement. In my opinion, as goes public education, especially the high school, goes the city. We have young families who are looking to this council, to the school committee, to this administration, to make sure that a new high school is on the front burner. Clearly, there's issues with the Public Safety Center, the JFK Plaza, ironically enough, it's been around so long now, it's probably dehistoric. And who knows what can happen at the end of the day, but we certainly do need to look at the police station and the central firehouse. But, again, I support our first priority from the standpoint of, your question is the high school. And I think, as Counselor Samaras said, getting, I graduated from Lowell High School, I was not in this building, I used to park where this building now sits. I was on double session, I went from 7:00 in the morning till noon time because the high school was so crowded when I was here. I just think it's our priority moving forward.
Mr. Yem.
I agree with our candidates here that high school is very important, and then this is the, the funding will be allocated by the state, and we almost to the point to make the decision on where the high school would be. But it doesn't matter where the high school would be, but high school is very important. Public safety also important, too. Where we grow up, where I grew up, we consider education is very important, it's a treasure. So, that's what we instill in our culture and background, that we have to educate our children, because these are the treasure that no one can take away from you. And what I like to see is the high school that will meet the 21st century, the challenge, that we, our student graduate from the high school, be able to go on to college and compete in the world economy, because we live in a global village. So, the public safety, I know the firehouse and all that need, but it's like John Leahy was saying, it's in the capital budget in the city that will be addressed later after the high school.
Thank you. I think the next question is for you, Counselor Samaras. The city council received a report last week about overdoses from opiates in the city. What is the single most important thing the city can do?
There's so many directions that we have to go in. I mean, that was a very serious report, a needed report. With that, one of the things that was talked about is the use of Narcan. I had mentioned that it wanted to be said after the city solicitor. The issue that we find with the ambulance, an ambulance comes to a spot, they pick someone up, they administer the shot, and that person can actually get up and leave and not go to the hospital. And I was asking, you know, what are our rights to demand that that person stay in the hospital three days? Since then, the governor's come out with his program, and I really think we have to support that, because what happens? What you're talking about is a person wants being revived is not, a person said, well, you know what, something happened to me, I better take care of myself, I better get myself off drugs. No, he says, I don't want to go back, or she's not wanting to go back, and we do. And it doesn't give the family time enough to get to them. So, I believe by mandating that they stay in the hospital and receive some care, that will be a wonderful start, and along with education, that's beneath that.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. What this council did was, when we started working on this issue recently, we asked for these quarterly reports, I believe it was. So, the first thing we're doing is we're keeping this continuous information coming to us as a council. I think there's just numerous things to be done. We had a speaker there last night from the high school. She wants to get started, but she feels like there's too many roadblocks. Just do it. We told her, just do what you want to do. And one of the points we brought up last night, too, were, you know, people have to stop making this a business. If you want to help people, if you want to do outreach, you can't charge $500 one year and $5,000 for next year to appear and speak on this. So, everybody's got to be honest about it. If you want to help out, and if you want to do something, do something. A few months ago, maybe, I'm losing track of the time, but maybe a year ago, when you had the article in the paper, that was a big breakthrough. We got numerous calls. Thank you for the stories. So, the more stories you produce, the more we keep it alive.
Counselor Malinazzo.
Thank you. The City Hall, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and really, the majority of the states in this country now are in crisis over this issue. The report that we received the other night indicated that we've had 49 deaths year-to-date from opiate addiction. Last year, I believe, we had all year 24, and we were alarmed back when we got that statistic last year. So, clearly, the crisis is getting worse. We need to do more outreach, we need to do education, we need to talk to the medical community about, you know, when a person goes into a knee surgery, as an example, instead of giving them 30 or 60 pills, you know, again, the government's come out, give them a three-day supply of pain medicine. We need to be able to, again, follow the public safety lead to try to keep the people that we are now saving using Narcan, to keep them either incarcerated or get them a bed, I guess is a better way to put it, in order to make sure that they don't overdose again. So, I think between outreach, the teacher that was at the council meeting last night was unbelievable for a passion for this issue.
Mr. Yem.
It is a crisis that, as a local municipal, I think we can do our part for immediate response, providing Narcan. I think that's one immediate solution. The governor came out with a long-term plan, but as we know, it's not going to be implemented in the next two, three years. By then, the escalation of the crisis is really out of proportion for a small town, I mean, for municipality. In addition to that, I had a group of young people that I met with, they, one young lady told me that her friend died, she's 20, 21. Her parents didn't even know that she, that the child is addicted to drugs. So, overwhelmingly, we talked about forming a, the first youth commission, Lowell Youth Commission. There are 27 boards and commissioners of the City of Lowell, and then there's Non-Red Youth Commission. And the young people say, these are the issue that the young people can address. Instead of us telling them, the young people, what to do, they would address it themselves and among themselves.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, as most of you know, I'm not originally from Lowell, and I came from South Boston. It's one of the areas in the state that has a huge opiate addiction issue. And, in fact, the best man in my wedding, one of my best friends, and my sister-in-law have fought with this over the years. One is now a council, one is recovered for a while. And I think you have to go at it at three prongs. You have to go at it and try and figure out where it's coming from. Is it just prescription, or is it on the street? Two, you have to figure out, how do we educate? We've got to bring the families into this. We've got to bring the adults, of the children who are in the high schools and the middle schools, we have to educate them, we have to educate the kids, we have to educate the pharmacies in the area, any civic groups. And we have to make sure that there is a prevention before it actually happens. You've got to stop it before it happens. Now, some people are going to sit through the cracks, it always happens. And the Narcan is great, but I think that, as was said before, we have to be able to get more beds and more facilities to rehab people.
Counselor Samaras brought up Governor Baker's, we'll just want to go around quickly, starting with Counselor Leahy. Three-day supply of drugs, possible three-day commitment.
I think that's a great idea. You know, I myself, when my children come home from having their wisdom teeth out, or whatever it is, and you get 60 pills in a prescription, it's way too much. So, limiting that is a great idea. I think his plan is, you know, it's about time that someone came out with this. I think it's great, and I think once we start following this, it's a big step forward to start to get a handle on this.
I agree. I think the governor's proposal is a step in the right direction. His administration, in fact, his Lieutenant Governor Karen Toledo has been to Lowell and has actually sat in on community meetings, talking about this very issue. So, I think that from a statewide perspective, they're very committed to at least going in this direction to try and save, you know, to try to save lives. I think it's something that if we were certainly asked to take a position on publicly in the floor of the council, I think the majority, I think it would be unanimous vote, actually, to support the governor's initiatives, because, again, I think when you hear stories about someone who has, was revived using Narcan, and they walk away, and they're being, again, revived four hours later, I mean, it's really clearly a problem. So, I think that if the governor's proposal does get passed, and I know the leadership at the State House is also in favor of this, our own state representative, Tommy Gold has been at the forefront of this, so congratulations to our state delegation to make sure that initiatives like what the governor's proposing does pass.
Yeah. I really support the governor's, and I congratulate him for taking the leadership, because, you know, it has to come from the state level, and Attorney General's Office also talked about that, and I'm happy to see that he came up with a proposal. The, in the meantime, I think as a municipality, we need to also address the immediate, we talked about, you know, provide Narcan, but we also need to require that person who received Narcan also get into a treatment as well. And then, number two, education, we talked about young, educational youngsters, and we start out with the young, in the youth group, in any group, we talked about. And then, I start, I have my older $2 graduate from high school, but I have the two younger one, and we start talking about that as well now that, because we listen to the news and watch the news, and they saw about it, and we talked about that. And also, the medication that given to, when they came back from the dentist, like John was talking about, it's similar thing. So, we reduce and limit it if they don't, in pain, we're not using it, so.
Mr. Hogan.
I agree with the initiative in base. My one problem is the 72-hour thing. I think that, I think for certain reasons, toothache, tooth surgery, knee surgery, back surgery, to a point, you need that. For people who are terminally ill, people who are chronically in pain, and we know this happens. I personally suffer from chronic pain, I broke my neck when I was in college, and I was, my doctor wasn't around when I was having the surgery for three days, and I know that was hell to get through. So, we have to be careful when we put these things down, that we don't hurt the most vulnerable, okay? But at the same time, education, and we need to offer more services for disposing of pharmaceuticals. The city could come up with a better way of disposing of pharmaceuticals, because I know people, when you get, again, toothache or something like that, you have 30-day prescription, and you have 20 left over. That's not good.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy, the next question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor Samaras, I apologize.
Let me out.
Well, it's your idea to start, that's why I didn't go back. Go ahead.
No problem. So, I do believe the governor's done the right thing. I stated, when you asked the question before, that our city solicitor stated that there are civil rights would be enriched if we didn't allow them to leave the scene after receiving a shot, with a change in the laws and structure, because when someone's coming out of a drug stupor or a coma, what have you, they're not in any position to make a sound decision. So, I really think that this is a good thing to do, to be able to hospitalize them, again, allow their families to reach them, and to receive the help that they need. At the same time, the idea of the medications for three days, it can create a problem. However, I think overall, based on myself, you know, if they go into a dentist or any doctor, a good doctor, the amount of pain pills that they give you, it's just wrong. I think that has to be really looked at from the medical side. So, I think, like the governor coming in, to set an arbitrary three days, will force the medical practice to really look at this in a very practical manner.
Thank you. Now, over to you, Counselor Leahy. Next question is, do city residents... Now, over to you, Council Leahy. Next question is, do city residents receive a good value in public services for their tax dollars?
Yes, they do. So for the amount of taxes that we pay, I think from traveling the state for the work that I do, I've been in many communities that pay much higher taxes, and they don't get curbside trash pickup. We get a good value in our police and fire departments, the city guys out there fixing the roads every day. So I think Lowell's a bargain. It's a great place to live, and I agree 100% of that.
Council Malanazo.
Thank you. I think we do provide excellent public service for our tax dollars. As Council Leahy said, everything from trash pickup to police, public safety. And again, in my opinion, Lowell is a wonderful community to raise a family. And it's affordable, and we have a very dedicated municipal staff. We have an excellent school system here, in my opinion. My daughter went K through 12 here and got into every college she applied to, and she excelled at Boston College, and wanted to get a master's degree at Simmons College, and today she's a schoolteacher in the town of Chumsford. However, again, public service, tax dollars, it is a wonderful community. It is a bargain. We pay $15 per $1,000, and I think that families really are looking to locate in communities like Lowell. Yes, we're a city with a large city in the Commonwealth, but I think for the dollars you have to pay to live here, you're getting wonderful benefits.
Mr. Yem.
I agree that residents of Lowell have received a great service for the tax dollars that we pay out to the city. However, I would like to see more diverse workforce in the city hall. I heard numerous concern, complain that the city of Lowell's workforce does not reflect the population out there. We have Latino, we have Cambodian, we have African who go to the city hall, that may not speak English, that they do not know where to go for services. So I, on one hand, I commend the service provider by the city of Lowell. On the other hand, I would like to see more diverse workforce that really reflect the true population of Lowell. My wife worked in the treasurer's office, and we have, she oftentimes came home telling me that we have some other people waiting in line, not to pay their taxes, but they just ask for questions, you know, where do I go to the building department or health department?
Mr. Hogan.
It is true that the taxes are much lower than anywhere else. And I do believe that, for the most part, we do offer city services. I would like to see us expand our tax base in the commercial area so that we could lower the tax on the common person. However, I know the taxes never go down, or very rarely do they ever go down. What I do believe is that we could offer more services, as was said here by Mr. Yem. Not only that, but we could also have more transparency. I think there's a need for transparency of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. I've lived here, two and a half, almost three years now, and my street has never had anything done to it as far as road, as far as, you know, even, I don't see anybody coming by just to check up on ISD things. I'm not seeing anything. So, and a lot of the people I talk to have said, we're not mad about what we pay. We're mad at that we don't see the transparency in what we're paying for. So I think that's important.
Council Samaras.
Thank you. No, I do believe we're getting a good bang for our dollar here in the city of Lowell. When you look at what's happening in some of the surrounding towns, we get at least one-third more services than they do. And I do know that, you know, the world's not perfect. But if you go to many of the neighborhood meetings, you will find all of the speaking in a positive tone about the change that they see happening in this city. That it's a more positive change, and that, we'll say, for example, neighborhood services under Mike Samaras. I mean, they see him as someone they can reach out to, to handle simple problems. The chief of police, or his deputy, or captain, or lieutenant, or sergeant coming to the meetings to talk about the issues of crime and protection. So what's happening is that we're, I think as a city council, we've asked the city manager to reach out, and he is reaching out to the citizenry. And I think that they have a better understanding of what they have, what's offered in the city, and they're taking advantage of it.
I'd actually like to follow up with a point Mr. Yem made. I'll start with you, Council Leahy. What can the city do to have a workforce that reflects the city population a little bit more?
Well, I mean, obviously, we can hire more people with different backgrounds at the city. But I think, you know, I think in the last few years, we've made that effort. More policemen, more fire, more people at city halls. So I, you know, Mr. Yem's probably a little more sensitive to the issue than I am, but I think we've been, we've been moving in that direction now. I see it in the schools, the teachers. So I think we're, I think we're moving in the right direction. I wouldn't say we're there, but I mean, it's not like we're ignoring the issue.
I agree. I think we have been moving in the right direction. I know that the administration has reached out to, I know, the Southeast Asian community and the Latino community to get more involved in boards and commissions, and we've seen some new appointments to our boards and commissions. As Council Leahy said, it's reflected certainly in the public school system. We have, obviously, English as a second language courses throughout our system, and we have a lot of Southeast Asian and Latino teachers in the system. We are moving in the right direction. I think that we could always do a better job, making our public sector workforce, if you will, be more representative of the community. But we have, through this administration, through this council, we have made some strides over the last year.
I agree with Council Leahy regarding the police force, the fire department. I've seen that the addition of law enforcement personnel, the teachers add on, too. But again, you know, I'd like to see more now the focus is on the city hall, and that's one of the reasons I'm running for Lowell City Council, because I'm concerned that, you know, we, Cambodian, made up of one-fourth of the city of Lowell population of 110. So we are about one-fourth, and we have no representation on a council floor. We had one here and there, but consistently, I think I'd like to see that, you know, reflecting of the changes in the population and reflecting the makeup of our cities. And I think the city moved in the right direction. I agree with that. And then I would love to continue to work, not just in a paid job, but it's also, and then boards and commission, see more appointment of different diversity of population in those boards and commissions.
Mr. Hogan.
My feeling towards this is that we have to hire the best and the brightest. We have to hire the people who are the best at that job, and education in the city will help with that. That will get kids of every ethnicity to a higher standard. Now, will they come back is the question after college. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But we can also invite people in and say, you know, as we do, I know we do, but we need to work on that to bring more people in. The second thing I'd like to say about that is, as far as representation, you know, you talk about diversity. I think it's also important to remember that not all the sections in the city are represented in the city council. So that's why I ran. That's one of the reasons I ran. Centerville really isn't represented. And that's why I ran in the first place. I'm glad I got brought up with these things, but I think that's also important.
Council Samaras.
Thank you. No, I think the city has always been, has always tried to go in the right direction. I worked at the school department a number of years, and there was always a willingness and understanding that we had to go out, try to recruit the best, the brightest, but go to the minority community to get some help. And what I do believe at this point, though, is if we're going to really be a community that's truly reflective of the population that's in the city, we have to do some very active recruiting. So what I'm saying is, recruitment is, in a sense, you offer the job, you place the ads in the paper, or you put them on the internet. But I'm looking at going into the community, meeting with community leaders, and talking about job opportunities in the city, and creating some type of board that can help and assist in this fashion. And that way, you reach into the community, and you can get the best and the brightest. But it's being, you can talk about being active, but how active are you, and how proactive are you?
We're going to have time for one more question. We'll start with you, Council Samaras.
Can I just add one more question to this? Because I think it's important, and I just want to say that my experience at the high school here, when Bill was headmaster, and when I was on school committee, and with my children coming out, I see in my kids, and I see it reflective of all of us. I don't think we really, you know, sometimes we miss the ball because we don't look at, I think we're all looking at it as we're all one now. And when my kids come home with their friends, and they could be of, you know, whatever, Asian, of color, or whatever, they're just, everybody's accepted as one now, and I really see that. And I think that was a reflection on Mr. Samaras when he was here, and just bringing my kids up to the public schools. So, you know, I mean, I'd love to have Mr. Yem serve with us, but I just think right now, we all kind of look at it as a whole, you know? And that's my view of that, so.
You're good? Okay. Last question for you, Council Malanazo.
Yes.
We're going to talk traffic. There was some, there was some, there was some worry about the change in the downtown traffic pattern. It really seems to be comfortable with it now, that it's successful. What other area of the city or intersection really needs some different thinking to solve the traffic problem?
Traffic has really gotten worse, in my opinion, over the last few months. I happen to serve as the chairman of the Transportation Subcommittee, so we have subcommittee meetings quite often, talking about how to improve traffic flow in the city. We've worked tirelessly lately on the work that's being done over the Lowell overpass, which will start next year. I think the Rook Bridge certainly needs to be looked at. Council Rook and I filed a motion to have the state look at the timing of the lights at the Rook Bridge, so that they'd be longer going outbound in the morning, and longer coming inbound in the afternoon. Again, it's a state issue, and hopefully, we'll get a report back from the State Department of Transportation. I think the fact that the Bridge Street and the VFW Highway is now being reconfigured, I think that's causing a lot of congestion. It's been mentioned this evening that we have a lot of full employment, we're full employment in the city, so we have a lot of people going to and from work every day. Again, I work in downtown Lowell, and I now have adjusted my time to leave my house, and instead of leaving at 7:30, I leave at 7 o'clock so I get there on time.
Mr. Yem.
I like the, I like what's going on because of the, the traffic is a problem, yes. I told a friend of mine who came to meet me in Boston that I got stuck in traffic downtown Lowell, and he laughed at me. He thought I might want to choose this. But that's to show that progress in the city of Lowell, number one. Number two, because of other construction, you know, we have the bridge work, and then the Bridge Street and VFW work, that pushing the traffic, creating more congestion. I like the two-way street downtown. I used to go to Enterprise Bank at a different location, but now that Merrimack Street is open two-way street, and I like it very much. And hopefully, when the Lowell overpass and reconfiguration, I can come from the Copper Square and Merrimack Street, where the Boys Club is, Pylon Plaza Street, down to Merrimack, Middlesex Street, I'm sorry, Middlesex Street from the Boys Club that way as well.
Mr. Hogan.
Well, I echo the same thing. It's already been said. I come home through the VFW Parkway area that way, so, and I go up Bridge Street, so, in the Centerville. So I'm hoping that it changes how things are there. But another place that really bothers me is, is when you get off Merrimack Street, the intersection. Some people still don't know if they can turn, if they can go. I think there's more need for more signage, actually. But my real concern for the city, and I know it's a state road, but the Lowell connector, at the end, we know that the house at the end gets crumbled, the fence in front gets crumbled every, what, six, eight weeks? Every time they rebuild it, it seems like it goes down. I think that's a big safety issue, and I honestly would like to, you know, see what we can do about that. I think that we have, you know, 100 cars coming off, and you can turn and make this space enough for 20. So you're asking for trouble there. So I think we need to do something there as well.
Council Samaras.
Thank you. When you're talking about traffic, you're talking about vitality, and that's important to a city. But that's created problems. One of the problems has been at Middlesex Community College, students crossing at different times, and it's created a problem. We had a motion to have the chief look into that, and the police have been looking into that, controlling that situation. They have been working at the University of Lowell with that control also. Along with Council Malanazo, I had made a motion on finding time, identifying the timeline, when will the Rook Bridge be built? I mean, you know, within our lifetime, because when it first started, it was going to be rebuilt in 10 years. It's been almost going through a fourth decade with this bridge. So that has to be worked on. There's a number of issues, and there's a number of construction jobs going on in the city with the streets. We're also looking at all the bridges controlled by NAL that don't allow for certain type of buses or trucks to go over. That's creating problems all over the city. So we've got a plan, and we're looking at what should be done. I think it can be addressed in a proper way.
Council Leahy.
Thank you. I just think with all the construction going on, the 495 that creates traffic in the city, the buildings at U Lowell, the VFW. So we've got all these construction projects going on, and it's just the traffic building up. We do have more cars on the road. I think we're moving in the right direction as far as the state's helping us with looking and redesigning roads like Nesnes Street. It needs to be widened. And the other thing that I, that I've been speaking up on, which really bugs me, is we've got to do a better job with painting our lines and the painting on the street, so people know, turn left, turn right, two-lane, one-lane. We've got to keep up with that, and we've got to do a better job with that, because it's getting a little bit dangerous. People get frustrated. They're both making their own lanes on the left side, they're speeding down, they're cutting in, or they're just blowing through lights. So we're coming to a head now, but we've started to address it, the management's office is addressing this. But I think painting the lines and keeping that ongoing will make a big difference.
Thank you. That's going to conclude the question format. We're now going to go to the final statements. You can, it's going to have one minute. The rotation will start with you, Mr. Yem. If they look into the camera and explain why somebody should vote for you under number three.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Paul Rata Yem, and I'm running for Lowell City Council. I'm married. My wife, my wife Robyn and I, we have four children. Two of our daughters graduated from Lowell High, one went on to college. I have two youngsters who are still in public school. I came to Lowell in 1989 to work for a local bank to develop businesses among the newly Southeast Asian community in the Copper Square and the Highlands, and also in the Acres. This is after I left the Commonwealth work at the Public Safety, Executive Office of Public Safety, and the Attorney General's Office. I later became the executive director of the Cambodian American League, where I finished a housing project down at 60 Middlesex Street at $5.2 million, where before even the JAM Plan in place. So I humbly ask for your vote November 3rd. I like to see diversity at the city hall, and I'm humbly ask for your vote November 3rd. My name is on the bottom because of my last name, Yem, so I'm number 18. It's easy to pick on the bottom. Thank you so much.
So what you're saying is I should never run for Council of Lowell. Thank you. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you. I want to thank the Lowell Sun for doing this and for setting this up in this group of people. We all care. We're here for a reason, and I'm running, as I'm sure everybody else is, because we care about Lowell. I haven't been here that long. I'm a newbie. But I know this. I care about this city. I know a lot of people out there care about this city. I know there was a low turnout in the primary. I think that's horrible for our city. I'm running because I want to be a voice for you. I want to be a person where you can come to. I want to be a neighbor, but also somebody that can help you make change. There is no other reason I'm running. I want to represent you. My name is Marty Hogan. To be honest, I think I'm 11th on the ballot, but you'll see it there, Marty Hogan, Hogan's Heroes. And I lived it through Watch Uson Street. I'm one of your neighbors, and I would be humbled to have your vote and your ear, and to be able to serve you on the city council. It would be an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Samaras.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Lowell Sun for having this debate. Actually, it allowed us to have some good dialogue about many issues. I am Bill Samaras. I'm running for reelection to the city council. I think the city of Lowell is going in the right direction. Why do I say that? If you look at revitalized Hamilton Canal, better lighting in the downtown, more policemen on the streets, money for education, meeting on net school spending. These are the, these are important factors in the these are important factors in the success of the city. But, as important as these projects are, I just believe there's been an attitudinal change in this city. It's becoming a we-can-do type city, and I'm proud to have been part of the programs that have taken us to where we are at this particular time. I think the city of Lowell can become one of the best mid-sized cities in the country. We talked about that, but I think what we see going on is a direction to making that happen. And I want to continue to be proud of that process to make it happen. I'm Bill Samaras, running for reelection, number eight on the sheets. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. Hi, my name's John Leahy, and I'm running for reelection to the city council. My wife, Joni, and I have businesses in the city, we've raised a family here, and we've educated three children in the public school. We felt that was very important to us. We also feel that it's important to give back to the city. I served on the school committee for a number of years, and then, I also feel that when you serve, it's important to let other people serve. I served on the school committee for ten years, I was comfortable with that, and I want to continue serving. I'm running for city council. The past two years, we've had, we've, this term, we've gotten a lot done. We've added policemen, we've fulfilled our education commitment, we've cut that up to a hundred percent of our commitment for spending, and also, over the past term, this council, myself, worked very hard with neighborhood leaders, and with you, to make our neighborhoods safe, make them healthy. And I think that's very important, because it all starts at home. If you're not happy where you live, you're not going to be happy. And that's my point of view, it starts in the neighborhood, and it flourishes out into the city. So, I'm number four on the ballot, my name's John Leahy, I ask for your support, and I thank you very much for all of you that get out and vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Milonazo.
Thank you, Tom. I'll begin by thanking the Lowell Sun for sponsoring tonight's debate. My name is Jim Milonazo, I'm running for reelection to the Lowell City Council, finishing up my fifth term, and I had the honor and privilege to serve as the mayor of your city, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, and I'm looking to really keep Lowell moving forward, which is the theme of my campaign this year. I have a strong economic development background, I've served in a variety of capacities in this city, I served as the executive director of the Housing Authority, I was the director of the Planning and Development Office here in Lowell, I served as director of the Lowell Plan and the Lowell Development Financial Corporation, I still serve as president of the Lowell Development Financial Corporation. And I think those types of agencies have been very key in the public-private partnership we've been able to build upon over the last few years. I'd like to continue to serve in the Lowell City Council, we've had some great news lately with the resurgence of the Hamilton Canal, and I think that I can contribute my voice to continue to move that project forward, to move the revitalization of the Tanner Street area forward, to look at the various retail districts that we have within our neighborhoods to make sure that those are improved upon. We have a great team on the Lowell City Council, we've made a great deal of progress working with Kevin Murphy as our new city manager, and again, I'd like to continue to serve in that capacity. My name is Jim Milonazo, and I'm number three on the ballot, and I respectfully request one of your votes on November third. Thank you.
Candidates, thank you very much. Once again, this panel was Speaker Congressman Jim Milonazo, Paul Ratayem, Marty Hogan, Commissioner Bill Samaras, and Commissioner John Leahy. That's going to conclude tonight's debate. Your thanks are in order, first, all the candidates to part this evening. Also, thank you to Lowell High School Headmaster Brian Martin for use of a little theater, and to our timekeeper at the bell, editorial page editor Dave McCarthy, who did a little bit of a workout in the third session.
Pretty long-winded.
Pretty long. We will be back tomorrow night, thank you for watching, back at five-thirty for the school committee debate, the two panels, my colleague Christopher Scott, enterprise editor of the Sun, will be moderating that debate as well, that'll also be livestreamed, and we'd love to have you out here at the Little Theater. Thank you very much, thank you again, candidates, have a great night, the election is November three, get out and vote.